According to the clock on the wall, it's four o'clock, so I think it's time for us to start our meeting. I'm Roger Ray. I'm the current Vice President of Ossers. We have a vacancy in the Presidency at the moment. We'll fill that later on. Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Meeting Board of Trustees we held Tuesday, September 3rd, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. in the Board Conference Room, second floor, Teacher Administrative Building, 3215 Cummings Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Retirement Office at the Teacher Administrative Center during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby notified that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted at the Board of Education Meeting Room on the North Wall. Would you please call the roll? And when they come to you, if you just press a little button in front of you so the green light turns on, that turns on the speaker so you can get recorded. Call the roll, please.
Born.
Present.
Hirschenbach.
Here.
Logan.
Here.
Plasek.
Here.
Johnson. And Ray.
Here. We have a quorum.
Seven present.
We do have a quorum. Twice a year, I'm sorry, four times a year, we have public comment, and this is our meeting for public comment. At this point, we have one speaker who submitted a form to speak. If anyone else in the audience wants to speak today, there are some forms on the chair as just as you came in. The Board has adopted Ossers Public Policy Comment Statement dated March 6, 2018, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. The same policy limits applies to individuals, to a maximum of, limits individuals to maximum of five minutes. We ask you to respect that time limit. Ms. Carter will let you know when you have one minute remaining, when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you need an interpreter, please contact, contact Ms. Carter and let her know. One will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comments related to a particular staff member or trustee, board member, we ask you to not mention the staff member or trustee board member by name, and instead provide the information to Ms. Carter, and she will assist the Board in looking into those details for you. If you're not getting an opportunity to speak and would like to submit written commentary, please provide it to Ms. Carter. She will be sure that each member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask you, please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. We have one hour. I've got 4:05, so at 5:05, the comment period will finish. If any speakers before still remaining, they'll have to go to the next time. And you have the form for the first one? We have Teresa Lux across the desk to speak. So Teresa, if you come to the microphone, state your name and spell your name for the record.
Teresa Lux, T-H-E-R-E-S-E, Lux, L-A-U-X, 9718 West Center, Omaha. All good? Well, hello, everyone. As I said, my name's Teresa Lux, and I retired from OPS about five years ago. Took advantage of the early leave incentive, and I can share with you, it felt as if I was ripping my heart out of my chest because I absolutely loved teaching at North High. However, I knew retirement would offer me the financial means to further my education. Currently teach in the Papillion La Vista Community Schools, and I'm working on my dissertation. I would like to thank you, each and every one of you, for sharing your time and talent on behalf of all the employees of OPS. What you do makes a difference, and I know often it's a thankless job, so thank you. I wish to share with you a recent experience I had with Ossers and to ask for a simple consideration. The original beneficiary notification letter I received from Ossers after my wife Laura Dugan died identified Laura as my mother and not as my wife. I'm here to ask you to please correct this one word and provide me with a new letter. And as for the background, she passed away June 15th. She had worked in OPS for a period of time, yet had to leave the district due to her ongoing battle with cancer. I used the online contact form to notify Ossers of her death, received a response from the Retirement Department, no specific name tied to that, and they requested a death certificate stating a letter would be drafted to the beneficiary. I responded I would scan the death certificate when it arrived and send it on. I also asked for the name of the person at Ossers I was communicating with online, to this I received no response. A few days later, I received a letter in the mail from Ossers. The correspondence began with, "Please accept our sincere condolences in the death of your mother, Laura Dugan." All of us make mistakes. It's not a big deal. It was a situation that could have been easily corrected. I called the phone number on the letter in hopes of speaking with the person, and after multiple tries over several days, I discovered the number was a non-working number. On June 26, I used the online contact form again to connect with Ossers. June 29, I received a direct email from Ms. Carter in response to my correspondence. She shared she would be addressing this with her staff and that a new letter would be forthcoming. July 1, I received a new letter which had removed mother, yet had not substituted wife. I sent an email to Ms. Carter asking if she would please send to me a letter with the wording, "Your wife Laura Dugan." I also shared with Ms. Carter how I did not understand how I could receive a letter indicating Laura was my mother, yet not one indicating she was my wife. By July 8, I had not received any additional communication from Ossers. At this time, I sent an email to Ms. Carter revisiting my request. July 10, Ms. Carter sent me an email stating there is no hidden agenda and that she was limited on communicating with me until she had a death certificate. I responded to Ms. Carter, thanking her for her reply, and included a death certificate. I shared I had not received a revised letter. OPS had established a precedent for personalizing these types of letters. Was there a reason my letter cannot be corrected from mother to wife? At this point, I sent an email to Delane Havlevic, sharing the situation with him. I merely noticed his name on the Ossers letterhead, and I knew him from his role in the Career Tech Ed Division here at TAC. He was basically one of my supervisors when I was at North. After no phone call, I'm sorry, Mr. Havlevic shared with me that I could expect a phone call from Ms. Carter. After no phone call, I sent an email to Dr. Logan, to which I CC'd Ms. Carter and Mr. Havlevic. During the week of July 20, Ms. Carter and I were able to connect in a phone conversation. Thank you. She relayed to me that the beneficiary form indicated Laura Dugan and I were friends. True, we were not married at the time. It wasn't possible at the time when Laura completed the paperwork. Ms. Carter also implied she had shared with her staff they should not include any relationship designation in the forms that are sent out to beneficiaries. Again, made the point, it appears that my letter can read "mother" or nothing at all, those two binary choices. Ms. Carter implied there would be some legal risk involved to her Board in changing the letter. I know but one of you on this Board. What I do know is that each and every one of you are most likely successful in what you do, partly due to your ability to maintain positive relationships with all people. As a teacher, I always remind myself, this is really my job, number one, in the classroom. I'm calling on the human element to take the very simple action of sending me a corrected letter. It's not my intent to make extra work for you. It's not my intent to challenge your authority. I'm hoping you can find a place to just say yes to honoring my request for a letter which substitutes the word "wife" for "mother." And again, I thank you for your service to the district. Thank you for allowing me this time to share this with you. It's important, and if you have questions, I'm more than happy to entertain them if that's within my time. Oh, those handouts, it would be good for them to have those now, or whenever you deem that you want to give them to your Board, but that gives a lot of clarity. Questions?
Thank you for your comments. Any questions?
Thank you. And there is a handout.
Thanks for coming, and the handout will be distributed to the Board after the meeting. Is anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Saying no one moving to this podium, I'll declare the public comment period closed at 4:11. I'd like to note that we have a couple of new Board members, and we don't necessarily know all each other, and I'd like to have just a quick introduction of the Board members for the purpose of getting to know each other better. I'll ask you to state your name, your position with the District, your position on the trustees, who you represent, and if you have anything else you'd like to say, you can do that, too. I'll start. I'm Roger Ray. I taught for OPS for 34 years. I'm the current Vice President of Ossers, and I represent the retired members of the Ossers family and have for the last 27 years. Let's go this direction.
I'm Faith Johnson, and I am starting my eighth year of teaching with OPS, and I'm at Nathan Hale, representing our certificated members.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Delane Havlevic, 22 years in Omaha Public Schools. I am the Coordinator of Career Education and Programming at our District Office, and welcome to our new Board members.
Matt, would you just go next?
Matt Flotzik, electrician up at the Maintenance Department, representing the classified members. Hello, everyone. My name is Pat Born. This is my first Ossers meeting. I'm, I guess, the Business Community Representative. I work for a health insurance company. I'm lifelong Omaha-on, two children, and my future daughter-in-law is starting as a teacher this fall at Bancroft. So excited to be here. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Scott Herkenbach. I'm the other business member. Been on the Board, I believe, for two years now. I work at Mutual of Omaha. I've been there for 27 years. Been in Omaha for 27 years.
Okay. Doc Logan?
Good afternoon. Cheryl Logan, Superintendent of Omaha Public Schools, and this is my 34th year in education. My first year was 1986, 1987 school year.
Okay. Thank you. And Cecilia, why don't you introduce yourself as well?
Cecilia Carter. I'm the Executive Director of Ossers, and I started here at OPS in 2016.
Okay. Thank you all. I'd like to welcome the new Board members and say hello to the returning Board members. We haven't seen each other in person for many months, and I want to make sure we all knew who each other were. The next item on the agenda is the action on the minutes. You received a copy of the minutes, both electronically as well as at the packet at your table. Are there corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Motion made to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and secondly, will the minutes be approved as presented? Is there further comment on the minutes? Saying none, would you please call the roll?
Havlevic.
Aye.
Hirschenbach.
Aye.
Plasek.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
And Born.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion carries. Next item is action on legal matters. Delane, I believe you have the motion for the executive session.
I move the Board of Trustees go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with legal counsel James Ellis, Keith Duval, Leslie Duval, and Cecilia Carter disability retirement litigation matters affecting the trust fund and personal financial matters regarding members of Ossers.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and secondly, go into closed session. Is there further discussion? Saying none, would you please call the roll?
Ray.
Aye.
Plasek.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Hirschenbach.
Aye.
Havlevic.
Aye.
And Born.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion carries. To remind the Board, the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss the legal counsel James Ellis, Keith Duval, Leslie Duval, and Cecilia Carter disability retirement litigation matters affecting the trust fund and personal financial matters regarding members of Ossers. I will excuse the guests, except the ones outlined here, just outside the door, please.
This one works just fine.
So in 2012, does that sound right? 2011, I was injured, but 2012...
He's doing good there for a while.
All right, so the mics are not going to work during closed session, so you just do have to speak loud. Yeah. Because we can't, we can't not record it, and we can't record this, so you just have to speak loud.
Testing. This one's working just fine.
Testing, one, two, testing.
Here you go. This one's working. Come and sit here. It was a great plan. Come sit here, love.
Thank you. Yeah.
All right.
Would you please call the roll?
Born.
Aye.
Havlevic.
Here.
Hirschenbach.
Here.
Logan.
Here.
Plasek.
Here.
Purdy. I'm sorry, Johnson.
Here.
And Ray.
Here.
Seven present.
We still have a quorum. Action on retirement payroll and whatnot. Matt, do you have a motion?
Making motion, move the Board of Trustees.
And just read the list.
Okay. Ratified July pension payroll in the amount of $10,967,414,000 to $5,056 pays. Ratify August pension payroll in the amount of $11,615,366,000 to $5,047 pays. Ratify July staff payroll in the amount of $31,441,44 cents. Ratify August staff payroll in the amount of $31,441,44 cents. Ratify six new retirement affected July 1, 2020. First pension payment, August 3, 2020. Approve 43 new retirements affected August 1, 2020. First pension payment, September 3, 2020. Ratify the suspension of 14 retirements due to the death of the retiree for the month of July. Ratify the suspension of 15 retirements and the contributions of two joint and survivor annuities due to the death of the retiree for the month of August. Ratify the processing of 16 refunds to former Ossers members in the aggregate of $186,828.10 in the month of July. Approve the processing of 16 refunds to former Ossers members in the aggregate of $248,199.22. Approve accounts payable for August in the aggregate of $12,235.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and secondly, that we take action on the retirement payments. Is there further discussion? Saying none, would you please call the roll?
Logan.
Aye.
Plasek.
Here.
Hirschenbach.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Havlevic.
Aye.
Born.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Yes, motion to enter into the door contract.
We heard a discussion in the executive session about the door contract, and I entertain a motion to approve the door contract as presented in executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and secondly, enter the door contract. Is there further discussion on the door contract? Would you please call the roll?
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Havlevic.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Born.
Aye.
Plasek.
Aye.
Hirschenbach.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion carries. I think the next item is going to be LB-31.
Yes.
Okay.
Bob, we want to disconnect.
You're going to disconnect, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, bye.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye. Take care.
Okay, LB-31 was, the study is now complete on the, what it would take to merge the governance and Board structure for Ossers and Empers. Cecilia, do you want to start the discussion?
As everyone is aware, LB-31 study report was filed with the Clerk of the Nebraska Legislature on June 30, 2020. The study called for an analysis of cost mechanism and timeline to transition the management of Ossers to the public employees retirement system, to the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement System. The report was written from two perspectives, the administration and technology. And per staff wrote, from their perspective, on the transition of the administration, and Linear Solutions wrote from their perspective on the technology needs. And Linear Solutions is a California company that is known in the pension industry for its work with past integration or pension administration system integrations. The Nebraska Legislative Retirement Committee has set Friday, September 18, 2020, for a hearing on this report. If everybody remembers, the Better Together Coalition, which was started last year, we met on Tuesday, August 4, and was tasked to consult with our stakeholders to glean their respect, from their respective groups, any and all questions their groups may have on the report, and whether a position will be taken at the hearing from our group. At this point, I'd appreciate if the Members of Ossers Board who have questions, if you just send me your questions, and then I will work on gleaning any answers for you, and then we'll come back at the September 3 meeting and discuss whether a position should be taken, and then I can get prepared for September 18. I get, I put in your package, the cover page to the 78 report, 78-page report. You got a PDF copy of it, and it is online. I also had written up over the summer a little synopsis of, you know, what I pulled out of the report. There's a copy of that for you, but please, you know, go through the report, and if there are things you don't understand, please touch base with me.
Questions about the report on LB-31? I do have a couple of questions about the report that the legislature submitted. It's a fairly lengthy report, and it's difficult to follow it completely without having little notes on the side to say what is going where. The memo that you put together earlier does help sort that out a little bit, but there are several things that the report mentions that I think we need to have some sort of clarity on. It does not, it indicates that there would not be any Omaha presence for the Ossers, for the Empers counseling staff. You addressed that in your report to some extent. I was wondering about the number of employees that are involved here, because when I look, if you look at just at the costs, it doesn't look like there's a great deal of savings. In fact, it costs quite a bit more, but I think there's other things that are noticed in that report. We currently have four employees. It said they'd have to have four new employees at Empers to do that. They would also need another person on the call center. They'd have to do additional, there's a couple other things that'd have to be added to it for IT and other things. I'm not sure if those are costs, if those other positions are delineated anyplace clearly. And I think without that information, we can't really get a good apples-to-apples comparison of the costs of what we're paying now for running Ossers and what it would be in the future. Is it possible to have that kind of analysis finished in September, or is that the sort of thing that will need to be asked at the hearing in September for the legislative body?
I can give you the cost on our side. Now, what they are going to expend for their additional staff, I do not have access to that. I can ask the Director over there, and we'll see what I can get.
Okay. The hearing in September, that's going to be before the Retirement Committee, is that correct? The Retirement Committee?
Yes.
As I understand it, that's not, they're not inviting public members to attend in person, they're inviting public test, they're inviting written testimony? Are you planning to attend in person to give live testimony or just to submit a written statement?
That'll be a discussion at our September meeting, what the Board wants to do.
All right, perfect. Other people have questions about the report?
No, I'll be attending in person at the request of Senator Coleman.
Okay.
So Cecilia, when would you want questions from the Board members or from Ossers Board?
Calendar. I would send you an email to remind you and give you a deadline date.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
I understand that the Better Together Coalition has got a meeting sometime later this month. Do you have any information on that meeting? I understand the Better Together Coalition's meeting with Senator Coleman on the 27th of August?
A representative, not the whole coalition.
Oh, just a representative?
Right.
Okay. Is that the representative going to be you, or is it going to be?
No, that is going to be the facilitator.
Okay, facilitator for BTC.
Yeah, Ms. Richards.
Interesting. So if you have questions about LB-31, Cecilia will send an email later this week reminding you to submit it to her by a specific date so she can compile those questions and get the answers to your questions as well. Anything more on LB-31?
That's it.
Okay. Unless there's other items on LB-31, we'll go on to the financial statements. Cecilia?
Okay. For the month of May, the fund had a fund value of $1 billion, 183 million, and cash on hand of $13.7 million. For the month of June, the fund value was up to $1,227 million and cash on hand of $13.2 million. This is a little bit more cash on hand than I'm accustomed and would like to have, and so I need to meet with OPS Finance so we can figure out how this built up. I'm not sure if it's checks not cashed or someone on the spreadsheet added an extra two. I don't know, but we'll, I'll work with our controller and look at it. So that is, those are our financials for May, excuse me, for July and August.
Okay. Are there questions on the financial reports?
No, excuse me, I'm sorry, May and June. Sorry.
June.
Yeah.
Questions on the financial reports? Okay, I think we're ready for the Executive Director's report.
Executive Directors, very short. I filed our Ossers Form C for the second quarter 2020 on July 17 with the Nebraska Accountability Commission. That is our quarterly filing for legislative relations, government relations. The other thing I just want to bring to the Board's attention is that we are seeing a slight increase in inquiry for retirements with effective dates of like October, November, and January. So we'll see who goes through with it, but we are actually processing calculations.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it. That concludes, that concludes the Executive Director's report.
Any questions on the Executive Director's report? Saying none, mixed item is trustee report. I have a couple of items. I distributed two memos for conferences I've attended either in person or by phone. I'd like to go over the one that's two pages about NCTR first. The NCTR Annual Trustee Meeting was held by virtual meeting in, from Berkeley. It's the first time I've represented... Uh, it's the first time I've, I've actually participated in a virtual conference. Uh, I was very impressed with the way it went, I was impressed with the quality of the speakers. They even had one session where they, uh, did a breakout, where you'd signed up in advance for which, uh, topic you wanted to yell, uh, go to. They had a general session first, and then the, uh, uh, director of the, uh, or the, actually, the guy who's in charge of the, uh, technology hit a button, and only the people who are each sexual were able to contact each other, and you had full discussion with Zoom meeting and those things. I was really impressed with the way that worked. Based on my experience with the, uh, trustee workshop, I know that the NCTR Annual Meeting in October will be also a virtual meeting, and I would recommend that, uh, virtual meeting to those who are able to participate in the annual meeting. A couple of items that I thought were useful, uh, in the, um, uh, breakout sessions that I, I, I attended, uh, about pension, uh, guiding pensions through turbulent waters, the fourth bullet report dealing with ESG. Environmental, social, and governance issues are not things we hear a lot about, but that's a big hot topic in, uh, discussion amongst other trustees. They were saying basically that, uh, if you don't engage in ESG concerns when you make your investments, that the marketplace will punish you, and that, uh, that ESG is going to be the hotbed of what's going on in the future. Environmental stuff deals with, uh, green, uh, energy, social, uh, justice, and governance deals with the governance of the corporations, not with the governance of the plans themselves. They talked a little bit about the future of education. I thought one of the interesting comments was, students may live by their cellphones, but they don't learn by their cellphones, need to have some other way to do it. And they were, uh, need, they said there's need to promote, promote active learning and a way of testing, uh, that active learning that's not the same as standardized tests. They need to find some new ways to develop, uh, measurements of, um, evaluation. The changing workplace, uh, they talked a little bit about everybody doing meeting by Zoom, and they suggested that teachers, as well as students, ought to use headsets if they're engaged in Zoom meetings, to help focus their attentions, they're not distracted by the stuff around them, and turn the cameras on, so you can kind of get a sense of how our students are getting it. Uh, I had not thought of that, to be honest about it, uh, I was figuring if you had the speakers there, you're, you're good, but they suggest that's not the way to do it. You need to see the faces of the people. They talked a little bit about real estate investments, uh, and how, how significant that is going to be and has been for pension systems. The average pension system has about a 17 ma, a percent, uh, of assets in real estate or some sort of real estate investment. I'm not sure they were at that high at the Investment Council. Uh, that's something Cecilia might want to talk a little about. They talked a little bit about the, uh, economic recovery that's going to be coming, it's going to be based on greed. I said greed, how do you get greed, uh, get the economic recovery? As well, for example, people are, are not taking cruises now. Uh, the cruise lines will offer very deep discounts, uh, to first people willing to take a cruise, and that deep discount will be so attractive, you figure, I can't afford to pass that up, so you get greedy, and you'll get out and spend money because you're kind of greedy. Uh, I thought that was an interesting, uh, relationship. On the risk management thing, the last bullet point I thought was, uh, important. OSERS may be leaving money on the table because we don't participate in class action lawsuits through a form of specializes in that product, uh, we never did, as, uh, when we had our own investments, uh, authority, and I don't think NIC does either. And Cecilia, you might want to ask, uh, NIC, and we can make, ring that up when they come to talk to us about the investments, about participating in the class action lawsuits. They had a couple of presenters who were actually handling those kinds of lawsuits. They said there's no cost in any retirement system, and all you do is recover money. And it's millions of dollars. The class action lawsuits are not just chump change, they're millions of dollars all the way through, so it's good, good, good money could be returned. Uh, someone asked about, uh, who was going to buy bonds if the negative, if the interest rate goes negative, and the, um, uh, comment was that, uh, there's always going to be a buyer for bonds, even if there's a negative interest environment, there's always people who want to have bonds in their portfolio, so you don't have to worry about negative interest rates end up impacting the, uh, uh, the lack of desire for bonds, because people are going to want them anyway. Uh, in the scenario thinking, the second bullet point, we tend, tend to underestimate the impact of something in the short term and overestimate it in the long term, and they mentioned the pandemic. People in the short term said it's not that bad, you can still go out without a mask, uh, it'll be all right, and turns out, you couldn't go out without a mask, you had to have a mask, and the long term is that, well, the workplace will never be the same, it'll be, it's totally changed, that's probably also inaccurate. It's probably going to be closer to normal than we have seen in the past, uh, and more than, closer to normal than we had thought. Uh, a company called PBI, uh, talked a little bit about their, uh, security, so, access to your Social Security death files, and when I got back, I asked Cecilia, what do we use, and now Social Security death files are not accessible to us? And they said, we use PBI. That's good to know, we're using the firm that has the greatest reputation. The second memo deals with a, um, conference call I had on, uh, long-term sustainability and affordability of pensions, and I thought the, uh, conference was not only, uh, very useful, it brought out some clearly, uh, useful pieces of information. Uh, they say those who say that pensions are not sustainable or affordable are usually using some assumptions that are manipulated, uh, to make the things look unaffordable. They compare 30-year liability numbers with one-year state and local revenues instead of 30-year revenues, so if you're going to compare apples to apples, it ought to be 30 years to 30 years. They mentioned Illinois as a case in point, where the Illinois pension liability is $240 billion, which is 60, the state resource, the state revenue is only 67 billion. It looks like the pension system is 360% of state revenue, but if you did it against the 30-year unfunded liability with 30-year revenues, the unfunded liability is only about 9% of revenues, and that ignores completely the economic, uh, and revenue value of the pensions at the local levels. So the new approach to affordability and sustainability examines relationship between the pension liabilities and economic capacity of the state and local governments as measured by the GDP. This approach was used by the, is now being used by the Federal Reserve Board of Governors, the Bank of England, and the Brookings Institute, and their studies show that under lower modest interest rate assumptions, in the aggregate, pension can be, can be stabilized for the country with very small, small and modest, moderate adjustments. A new study of, by INPERS, of ICPS, uh, the In Tranquility and Turmoil pensions, Keep Calm and Carry On, did exactly that. They compared the 30-year liability of pensions with annual GDP, uh, growth, and if you look at the lines of 30-year pension liabilities, growth, and GDP growth, they are almost, uh, identical, there's almost no deviation. The takeaway was that as long as taxpayers get back more than they pay into, pay into the pension plans, pensions are affordable. In 2018, pension, public pensions are responsible for more than $341 billion in tax revenues, and ta, taxpayer contributions were only $162 million, billion dollars. So public pensions, uh, generate state and local revenues in two ways, the local economy grows when pensions are invested, and the state and local economies grow when retirees spend their pension checks. If pensions did not exist, the public employee, the, uh, revenues for the state would be less, and taxes would be, have to be higher in order to provide the same level of, uh, services. They did acknowledge that there is about budget pressures, and the budget pressures are primarily because of tax policy. Over the years, the governments have made their, uh, uh, revenue streams, uh, more regressive and reliance on other things besides, uh, uh, just, uh, taxes, uh, fees, and casinos, and lotteries, and like that. As a result, if the economy grows by 1% of revenues, revenues only grow by about 75%, 75 hundreds of a percent. In other words, revenues are always going to be short, whether it's pensions or not. I thought those were interesting, uh, pieces of information for us all to, uh, to know, and I've given the reference of the ICPS report. That concludes my report. Are there other trustees' reports? Saying none, time for the action on officers. Uh, the officers for OSERS typically serve for one year at a time. We've had the same officers for years. Uh, the, um, president of the, uh, OSERS Board has always been, or not always been for the last number of years, has been one of the business representatives, and the vice president has been one of the, uh, senior trustee members. I've been the vice president for a long, uh, period of time. We need to elect a new president. Uh, there is a couple of, uh, options for that. Any board member can nominate themselves, or they can be nominated by another board member. Uh, we typically don't have nominating speeches, but they could have up to three minutes to speak if you wanted to, and speak after nomination. Uh, if there's only one person nominated for a position, there's no reason for us to have a vote. If there's two people or more, we'll have a vote by secret ballot. It requires the majority of the members of the Board to vote in favor in order to have the, uh, uh, election be declared. So with that being said, we are open for nominations for, uh, Board President. Are there nominations for the Board President?
I'd like to nominate Patrick Bourne for Board President.
Okay.
Second.
Did, did you hear the choo-choo train coming, Pat? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, in accordance with the Roberts Rules of Order, if there was only one person nominated for a position, there's no need for a vote, and I will declare that Patrick Bourne has been elected, uh, chairman of the Board, or president of the Board for next year. Welcome, Pat, and congratulations. Anything you want to say? Anything you want to say for yourself?
No, thank you.
Okay. I'm the current Vice President. I'm the current Vice President, and, uh, uh, I'd be willing to serve again, uh, if, uh, if, uh, if, if that's your pleasure. Are there nominations for Vice President? Other than me? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, since there's only one nomination for the Vice President position, I declare that position elected, and I can declare me elected as Vice President. Congratulations to the new Board Officers. Is there any other new business before, come before our, uh, our body? If not, I will declare the meeting adjourned at 5:52 PM.